You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome to the Ballstalk Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 269 of East Central Illinois' favorite podcast. I'm Jeremiah Moore. Going to be your solo host today. Joining me, my rock here, our audio video engineer slash technical support guy, Zach Bircham. We, this may be an audio only episode tonight. We don't know. Or maybe it's going to be an audio that Dakota puts together and magically becomes a replay available later on Facebook. Stay tuned. Is that the, is that the official answer?
Yeah, right now, we're broadcasting to the Patreon group. And so that way, the video is there. And if Dakota wants to mess with it later, he can. But I didn't want to broadcast publicly knowing that we have no sound.
Knowing the sound's not going to be there. Well, we're going to make the best of it. And we've had, we've got two candidates tonight that have been incredibly patient and good sports with it. And we're gonna, we're gonna carry on. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a worthwhile show. This show is about our lives in rural Indiana. We're here to push your boundaries and make you think as individuals. Sometimes provoke you, other times to make you laugh. But hopefully, you'll always learn something new.
It's live?
You're live. You're on the air.
Okay, because this isn't.
Uh oh. You've lost your headphones? It's okay. It's, it is working, I assure you. But the headphones, you can just throw them aside. Everything else broke today, Steve. It's just a, just a part of the act. Do you have to do some thank yous real quick? We did a, we did a Patreon that, that was also a silent talkie. Had to spend some time talking about a controversy I started this week. And I tried to talk my way out of it. You can, you can tune in and decide if it actually worked out or not. Chris D. Avery, Jonathan Phillips, and Anthony Meyer, you guys are the, the folks that give at least $50 or more a month to the show that gets us on the air every week. And for the candidate series, again, we do have to say a special thank you to a couple of sponsors that have been with us since the very beginning of the, of the candidate series. The Slick Pickle, Big Bounce Inflatables, and Wyland's Flowers, which, which did a fantastic job. Just a couple of weeks ago, the incredible Sarah Moore had a birthday, walked into Wyland, said, hey, I need something neat. They did this big yellow bouquet of sunflowers and other stuff. And the folks at Wyland's took good care of us. If you want any merchandise, we've got all that. Zach will drop the link tree in the, in the live feed that has no, it won't be in the live feed. Go to the website, click on merch. It's all out. It's all over there. Ballsarkliberty.com. All right. Let's, let's talk to some candidates. On my right, we've got, so the candidates we're talking to tonight are going to be our county commissioner candidates. This is the Indiana, so we've got listeners all over the country, but we're very much Henry County, Indiana focused. If you remember back in the primary, we, we had Joe Wiley and Joey Cooper on. And this is the northern district. So essentially, a county is divided up three ways. These folks have to live in the northern third of Henry County. But then all 50,000 people and change in the county vote for them. So the way that the Indiana government designed this seat is that you have three commissioners that are equals to each other, that are from geographically different areas of the community. But they together, the three individuals, then act as the executive body for, for a county. So you have geographic split, so that you don't have three people from one city saying, hey, here's what I want to do. And then, but the entire county gets to vote. So with that, let's, let's do some introductions. On my right, camera left, is Steve Holmes. You're the Democrat running for county commissioner.
That's correct.
Welcome, my guy.
Thank you.
First time on the show.
Yes.
So tell us, tell us a little bit about yourself. The elevator pitch of who's, who's Steve Holmes? And what's your background? How you, how you got here?
Steve Holmes. Steve Holmes was born and raised here in Henry County, grew up in Middletown, the northwest corner of, of Henry County, graduated from Middletown High School, attended Ball State University and Santa Monica College in California, traveled a lot for about 30 years, worked all over the world, and came back to Indiana in 1990. Since 1990, I've been very active in community affairs and, and community offices in Henry County. And just thought I'd give this a toss.
So what kind of work did you do professionally as you were traveling around for?
Entertainment industry.
Entertainment industry. So vaudeville acts?
Yeah, train seal. Yeah.
Train seal?
Yeah.
I mean, listen, I have no idea. If you went to Santa Monica, I don't know what was going on in the pier. So I, I don't know what to think.
I started in New York Theater, and became a technical director and a stage manager in, in New York City, and wound up in, in California in television, Universal Studios.
He's, so he's, he's a technical manager, and he's a TV guy. And here we are struggling to try to get on the air, Zach. And he's just, now he's volunteering this information. Watching us thrash.
Did, did some television work for several years. And then came back to Indiana in 1990.
Very good. And Joe, remind, remind the audience of, of your background, what, how you, how you got here to this point? What you've been doing? Introduce yourself. Joe Wiley.
First of all, thank you to you and your team for putting this together, the candidate series. And Steve and I appreciate being here. 21 years ago today, my wife and I were married in the Mount Summit Christian Church. Between the two of us, we have six children and 18 grandchildren. So that's what I've been doing for the last 21 years, taking care of, of my wife and my children, my grandchildren. They've all, the children have all grown and, and have their families of their own. I, I graduated from Rushville Consolidated High School. And then after that, I went to the Vincent University for an associate's degree in law enforcement, then transferred my credits to Ball State, where I got a degree in criminal justice and corrections, a bachelor's degree. And then shortly after that, I went back to get a teaching degree in industrial education. I did not finish that. I had three short, three classes short of finishing my teaching degree in industrial education. But as an employee with the Indiana State Police, of which I was an employee of the state police for 24 and a half years, they ended up having me be an instructor in the academy. So I found that to be a lot more appealing than teaching high school. But as a time with the Indiana State Police, I served as a trooper and a field training officer. I was on the underwater search and rescue team. I was on the emergency response team. And I served as a corporal for a period of time. And then I was a sergeant in the Training Division, where I taught firearms and defensive tactics and verbal judo. Then I was an investigator for the period of time, for a year and a half, before I ended up retiring from the state police. Then I spent 15 and a half years with the Henry County Highway Department. I went through the training program that's provided through Purdue. It's called the Local Technical Assistance Program. I received the Road Builder Course, and also the Master Road Builder Course, and served on, I was president of the Indiana Association of County Highway Engineers and Supervisors, and served on the Board of Directors for LTAP, and also the Association of Indiana Counties. I served as president for the Indiana Association of County Highway Engineers Supervisors. And I also served as a member of the, of the Board of Aviation Commissioners for a period of time. And I served as a president for the, for the BoAC. And I currently work security for the Alliance Security, which is, it's off duty troopers and retired troopers. That's what I spend my time doing now.
So county commissioner, counties have airports, and you serve on the board for like communities? Is that what that is?
When, when I was on the Board of Aviation Commissioners here, it was called the Newcastle Henry County Airport. It is now just strictly a Newcastle Airport. But it was a, it was a community deal between the city and the county. And they needed an additional board member. So I served as a board member. Then I ended up being president for a period of time of that Board of Aviation Commissioners.
Okay. So it was, it was the local, for the local airport?
That's correct.
statewide? I got it. Okay. I'm with you now. All right. So very open ended question, Steve. You've, you've been all over, all over the country. You've, you've lived somewhere else, and you've, you've come back and chosen to make your, make your home back in Henry County now for the last 30 years or so. So what's the next 10 look like? What do you, you look forward and say, hey, here's what I want Henry County to look like in the next 10 years?
10 years.
So 2032. What's, what's Henry County look like in 2032?
Henry County moves kind of slow.
It's almost year 2000 around here.
In 10 years, it probably won't look a lot different than it does now. But I'd like to see some changes made that will direct us toward some great improvement over the next 20 years. I'd like to see a lot of industry come here. Ohio just got two super microchip companies, and facilities being put in over there.
Intel in New Albany.
Right. For the, for the chips that make our cars run. And I would like to see Indiana, specifically Henry County, get some of that. Henry County was once a manufacturing maker. And we had Chrysler, we had Firestone, we had Perfect Circle, we had a lot of factories, a lot of industry. And a lot of it has gone away. Boars Head is a great start. But I'd like to see some great companies come in.
All right. And Joe, just high level, what's, what's Henry County look like in 10 years? If it, what, what do you, what's your vision, your, your, your goal?
What I've been told, in the very near future, there will be a medical facility at 109 and I-70, like a med check, and also maybe a same day surgery. It's going to be located on the south side of I-70. There's a million dollars of the AFR funds that have been, and contributed to run the sewer and the water from Knightstown up to the 109 and 70 interchange for that expansion of the, what's considered the hospital expansion. There's scheduled to be a 60 to 65 room hotel at 3 and 70, and potentially a sports park at 103 and I-70. There's probably going to be in the next 10 years, from what I hear, an add on to the new correctional facility as, as of today, it's, it's about 85% capacity. And, and there's a program called JTAP, the acronym is J-T-A-P, that starts in October. And that will take approximately eight females and 16 males out of the general population and put them in the program for drug rehabilitation and so forth. So there's 24 spots that may come available.
So back, back up for me just a second. So you, what you're telling us is that the new jail is, is essentially full?
What I'm telling you.
And expansion is, should be expected already?
What I'm telling you is, what I've heard from the, from the county office holders is that the report that they've gotten is that the jail is what is considered 85% full, which is what the capacity that they're looking at saying, yes, we're full. I believe they're all local inmates. It's not like they filled it up with people from around the state. And because the program that the new facility was built to house, the JTAP program is inside that facility, which they will be taking eight female and 16 male inmates out of the general population and move them to the special area where they will be receiving drug rehabilitation. That's my understanding.
Okay.
So that would leave 24, bring, bring the numbers down below 200. Those are just the numbers that I've been given. And, and from, from the information that I have, have heard is that when they built it, it was never expected to be as big as it needs to be. But it was built, and it is a very fine facility from what the tour that I took of it prior to being inhabited by inmates. It appears to be a very, very fine facility, and one that has, has been constructed with the options of if you need more, you, you build out this way, and, and so forth. And I'm assuming within the next 10 years, they'll be around about at Ranger Road and 36, and also one at US 40 and State Route 3 at the West intersection. And then there was $1 million from the R Fund, ARF, the American Rescue Funds, that to South Henry Regional Waste District, to increase the capacity and rebuild the lift station at the Flying J.
So a lot of infrastructure improvements that are, that are on the books, and you're expecting to come along?
I'm, I'm just saying, these, these are things that I've been told that were, that were in the process of, of being constructed and being started as a result. A lot of it, the, especially the two infrastructure is, is about the ARF funds.
Okay.
And that is something that happened in Henry County, along with many other counties throughout the United States, as a result of the pandemic. And, and the monies that have been made available to local communities has just been incredible.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of been like a once in a lifetime cash infusion for, for communities to, to try to, try to figure out how to, how to spend it or to invest it in a way that doesn't just vanish, right? All right. Let's, let's go with Steve again. This is something that I, I think that over the last few years, Henry County Commissioners have, have struggled with. And that's been some open door violations and public meetings and decisions being made outside of meetings. And it's led to the public access counselor. So the, basically essentially the state saying, hey, Henry County, you gotta get your act together. You're gonna get, you're gonna, there's gonna be some action taken. What should the county commissioners be doing differently to, to not every, you know, once every year or so, end up getting a nasty letter saying, hey, citizens are, are not liking what's going on?
I think, I think they need to educate themselves as to what they're allowed to do and not to do. They're not allowed to have meetings outside the, outside the public meetings. They're not allowed to talk about things together outside of the meetings or make any decisions outside those meetings. I, when I go to the commissioners' meetings, and I sit there and listen, I hear Bobby Plummer say, have you had a chance to look at that? Have you had a chance to look at that? Yes. And they make a motion, they second it, and they pass it. Those of us sitting out there don't know what they're talking about. We don't know whether they're paying a light bill, or whether they're spending, spending a hundred thousand dollars somewhere. We don't know. It's just.
Have you reviewed?
Yeah. Yeah. It's not reviewed at all for the public. And I went to one meeting where there was like 10 minutes of that, just one after another. I move, I second, they pass. I move, I second, I pass. And I don't think that's being transparent.
So if you're, if you're sitting in one of the commissioners' chairs, six months from now, how do you, how do you see that operating differently?
I think that whatever you're voting for has to be presented to the public, what we're voting for, and open it for discussion on the panel, and then make the vote. I don't think it should just be a rubber stamp thing.
All right. Joe, on the, on the topic of open door violations, I know some of this is ground we've already plowed in the spring, but I think it's important to have the conversation again.
I wasn't, I wouldn't party to being at a meeting when, when this open door situation happened. And I'm aware that it did happen from what I read about in the newspaper and so forth. And I, I trust that they're making their adjustments so that that doesn't happen again. I'm, I'm aware that there's an attorney present with them during their meetings. And I would assume that, that their knowledge would be, they would have gained the knowledge that they need in order to not violate those open door policies again. And I would hope to be, hope that would be the case.
All right. Um, when it comes to transparency in government, this is something that we hear about consistently from, from candidates as they're, as we, as we come to this stage, we say, yeah, we want to see more of what's going on. We want to, we want to know what's happening. What actions can, can a county commissioner take from, from your role to say, hey, here's, here's how we're going to show the, the voters of Henry County, how we're spending your money, how we're, how we're making our decisions? What, what would you do differently, if anything?
Having attended many, many commissioner meetings throughout the years that I was on the county department, if I wanted to know what was going on, I would read on the, the little piece of paper that they would print out that would tell what the topics were. If I needed to know what specifically was going on, I would, I would raise my hand and ask the question. I just, I followed through on, on the items that they were taking actions on. And, and I understood whether it was, if it was something that affected my life or, or my job, I had already presented enough information to them that I knew what it was, and could explain to the public that was there, what it is that we were doing. If, if I, for instance, was attempting to get a million dollars for the Community Crossing Grant Fund for, for road repairs, then I would explain what we were doing, where we were going to do the repairs, and what we're, what we were asking for, and what we had to do in order to get the money. And that's the way I tried to do, I tried to, tried to explain in a public meeting, what, what it was that we were doing, and what, what we were asking for, and what was going to be required of us.
Steve, on the transparency issue, are there any specific actions you think need to happen? Maybe agenda, posting agendas ahead of time?
Well, there is an agenda.
Copies of, copies of claims that go on websites, anything like that?
The paper that Joe mentioned is the agenda, that the agenda's there. And it does have a list of topics they're going to discuss. But there's a section of the meeting where they're just doing rubber stamp stuff that we don't know what it is.
Those, you're talking about like their claims, essentially, when they're paying invoices?
Claims. Well, now paying invoices, we should still know what they're paying. I mean, it's not just rubber stamp this and rubber stamp that. We still need to know what, what our commissioners are doing, just to keep them transparent.
All right. Um, this is, this is like the third rail of Henry County politics, the, the next topic here. And that's, that's land use, Steve. And you talked about your, your interest in Henry County attracting, it sounds like some sort of technical manufacturing facilities.
Yeah.
We've, we've had mixed results in, in taking cornfields and turning them into something other than corn and soybean fields in the community. How, how should we determine what happens with, with the ground in Henry County? How do, how do we agree to, to have these 50,000 or more people live together harmoniously and still have development?
When we have a situation like renewable energy, it's been before the commission for how many years?
Nine.
Nine years. It's time for a referendum. I mean, if they can't make any decision or decide one way or another, I think it's time to go to referendum on some of these issues.
But Indiana doesn't have a referendum, right? We don't, well, we don't have, is there a mechanism that you think we would, we would have a, a binding referendum to say, hey, are we going to have, are we going to allow, commissioners have solar moratoriums that come into place? Are we, should we have just, should Henry County have a solar moratorium referendum for the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, let, let the voters tell the commissioners what the voters want the commissioners to do.
Okay.
And put it on a ballot.
So, so that's, that's with the, the renewable energy issue?
Renewable energy.
But if we're talking asphalt plants, we're talking CAFOs, we're saying, hey, light, light industrial, whatever, where, where do we say, hey, referendum versus, okay, commissioners are going to approve it?
Asphalt and I think, I think asphalt is, is a business. So is solar energy. So is, so is wind energy. It's a business. But those two issues are widespread thing. They want to put them several places throughout the county. And asphalt company is just a business that wants to open something down, if at one time it was down by Road 3, they wanted to open an asphalt plant there. And the neighbors raised the dickens because they didn't want an asphalt plant there. That's.
It's the NIMBY argument, right? Not in my backyard. I don't want.
Exactly.
I don't want that here.
I don't want that here. Yeah. But, but no matter where they put it, there's going to be somebody says, I don't want that here.
Right.
I'm not sure what the answer is on that. When a business wants to open a factory or a company or a business somewhere, and they apply, I think, I think that should be considered fine. But if people complain around it, I don't know how you handle that.
All right. Joe, how do we all get along?
Excellent question. I, from my time of listening in the commissioner meetings and council members and so forth, council meetings, going back to the 2005, when the ethanol was originally, they were going to put two ethanol plants, one on 100 East, and one out on State Route 38, north of State Route 38 on 600 East. And they were seemingly in the process of going to be able to do that. And then there was a change in commissioners in 2006, and that was immediately shot, shot down, that that wasn't going to happen. And then the asphalt plant has, one of the companies has tried twice. One, and one location was there just near the State Road 3 and I-70 on the east side of the road there. And then the other one was on 400 South at 25 West, relatively close to that location. But both times, the asphalt plant was, was shut down due to neighbors saying, no, not here, not, not in my location, and so forth. In, in my opinion, and just as an example, nobody asked me at the time, but the, the county, the county highway utilizes hot mixed asphalt in their road building projects. And similar to crushed limestone that the county highway uses a great deal of it, just so happens when they drew the, the square of Swartz and said, we're going to call this place Henry County, Henry County does not have any natural limestone. And they do not have any, obviously limestone is used in making the hot mixed asphalt. And there happens to be no hot mixed asphalt plant. There was one back in the seventies on 800 North, but it's no longer, it hasn't been there for 30 years. But, and as a result of that, everything that they use in Henry County to build roads has to be trucked here. And the cost of trucking, just in the last 20 years alone, has just expanded, increased so much.
The last three years trucking has, has grown exponentially. Yeah.
So there, there is no way of making up for not having natural resources of crushed limestone. We have a gravel pit in Henry County, but no crushed limestone. And that's what's used to build, build roads. And then the asphalt plant, if there would have been one locally, then that would have saved a considerable amount of money. At this time, they have to try, drive to Muncie or to Morristown or, or Milton to get hot mixed asphalt. And Anderson and Pendleton and Rush County have the crushed limestone. But that's just something that I was aware of because I was in that business for a while.
But Joe, if, if we had, if, if we had, if we put the asphalt plant here, so we wouldn't have to haul asphalt, but then we have to haul limestone, it's.
You are correct. Yes, it's, it's absolutely, it's, it's 100% a situation where Henry County just got, they, they got put in a place where it doesn't, it doesn't exist. And you have to truck it. And it's been that way for, since the beginning of time.
Everything has to get trucked in. But if you have, if you have asphalt that's readily available, yeah. If you have asphalt that's within five miles of a job site, it's a whole lot easier to turn that around quickly than it is to, you know, to, to bring the entire product in from, from Delaware County. I know you see the municipal folks, the city, city of Newcastle going up with their hot box to Delaware County all the time, trying to bring, bring asphalt home to, to patch. And it's just a wildly inefficient process. So Joe, on the, on the solar and wind side, I, I know on the wind issue, you, you said previously that, you know, like Henry County pretty much has spoken, and nobody's, nobody's proposing any, anything on the wind side. The solar moratorium, do you have any feelings on, on that?
From sitting and listening to citizens of Henry County that participated in the process, over the period of, I said nine years, basically, the nine years ended two years ago. It's been 11 years, I guess, that I've listened to people come in and speak before the commissioners and before the council, either for or against wind in the beginning, and then it kind of slowly turned to, to solar. But the overwhelming, overwhelming number of people that showed up in opposition, including the Grim Reaper, in opposition to the, to the wind. And then in the ballot box, the, the citizens of Henry County spoke loud and clear in regards to the wind. And that's where we are today. The solar, the, the one plant that's being constructed now, that has the permit that's down south of US 40, mostly in Henry County and partially in Rush County, or vice versa, one of the others in both counties, it's being constructed and, and, and seems to be moving right along. And then the Greensboro Solar Project that has been spoken of before is involved in the moratorium. And then, of course, the, the Middletown community put together what sounds like And then, of course, the, the Middletown community put together what sounds like a wonderful plan for them to get energy from a solar plant right there in, that's going to be, what's going to be in their municipality.
So that's going to be an impa plant?
It's an impa plant. It's 10, 10 acres, and they've started working on it now.
Right. So that, and then what they have at, at Spiceland and what they're doing at Knightstown and.
So, help, help me, because I'm a, I'm a layman. How does, how does a county have a moratorium on solar, but then in a place like Morristown, not by Morristown, goodness, I'm, apparently I'm overtired, I'm talking Shelby County. In, in Middletown, you, you can still build a 10 acre solar project?
The Middletown project is in the city limits of Middletown. It's Middletown's deal.
So the county, the county doesn't govern that? The town, the town determines that one on their.
Actually, we are in the process of annexing that 10 acres in Ratttown.
Yeah. But it will be.
It'll be inside.
Yes. And that's, that was, that was all done through the, the hard work of people in Middletown and.
And impa.
And impa and, and what is it, Knightstown and, and what's in Spiceland? And those are, those are utility owned solar plants. And what is located in the southern part of Henry County is a, it's, it's a private, private individuals have leased and/or sold their land to a corporation that's putting in a, a large solar farm. And that was passed and approved by the county ordinances that are, that were in place. And after that happened, that's when the county put a moratorium on any further commercial solar farms.
So if you, if you're sitting in the commissioner's chair come January, would you intend to continue with the moratorium going forward? Would you see that changing?
I don't have any more information than what I've just given you, and I don't, I, I've asked about the moratorium and I've, I've, I've spoken with the next era of people that are behind this, this, the solar greenfield, excuse me, Greensboro Solar Project. I've spoken to one of the large landowners that has said that he signed up for it. I've listened and I, I don't have an, I don't have a better opinion other than to say that at this time, the three commissioners have issued a, a moratorium. And that's, that's what I know.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's talk about something that's been, been pretty, pretty near and dear to my heart, and that's Memorial Park. I got to serve a couple of years on the park board. I, I was, I was wildly frustrated as a board member because it was a, the, the more time I spent in, in, on the inside, the more I recognized that you have so many different parties involved in, in the park and different stakeholders that it's, it, it almost felt ungovernable to me or difficult to make decisions. And ultimately what happened is that the decisions wound up coming back up to the office that y'all are going to be, that you're seeking and the county commissioners. So by my count, you've got a Veterans Museum, which is an independent organization, Henry County Saddle Club, Henry County 4H is, is a major tenant, but they're not actually, they don't own anything. The Henry County Expo Center is, is an independent organization. Then you've got a private golf course that shares some utilities there. And then you've got just a number of members of public that, that, that rent it regularly and are, are, are users of the facility. Steve, how does Memorial Park coexist and how do you get, you know, you've got, unfortunately, you've got a, a half completed expo center project right now that, that the commissioners may end up being responsible for something. What, what is your vision for handling Memorial Park and, and working through the leadership of it?
I think the park is the park, and all these things that you've listed there are franchises. And those franchisees come in and use the facility, whether they rent it or they have a contract for payment, I don't know what the saddle club pays for the use of the area there.
They all have lease, they have long-term leases for a dollar a year essentially. So they have, they have their space and they, you know.
And the saddle, the saddle club, as I understand it, takes care of their own, own.
They do their own maintenance.
They do, they do their own maintenance.
Yep.
The expo center is yet to be seen. I don't, none of us know what's going to happen with that. I don't know if, if there's any plan as to when it's going to be completed.
Correct.
The 4H club, they just come in every year and rent. They're very demanding though. They come in and they want this and they want that and they want it now. The golf course, that's, that's just.
It's been sold, so it's, like I said, there are some utilities that, that over, overlap, but they're, I don't really.
It's no longer a part of the park.
Correct. It's, it's, it's now owned by privately.
They just need to separate their utilities from it.
In theory, yeah, you could do that, I suppose. But yeah, you, I mean, you have, you have, I know that, but going back to my time when I was, when I was on the board, I know the water, the water is metered as a group, so the water and sewer, the, the saddle club, the Memorial Park Organization and the, and the golf course are all paying a third of those bills.
Now, my, my limited exposure to the, to the board out there was, it was a zoo.
You had a tremendous amount of turnover.
Yes.
In a, in a handful of years.
Well, hopefully there are people there now who can get along a little better than the group that I saw there, because there was absolutely pulling hair to get anything done, to, to make a decision on anything, because somebody didn't want this or somebody didn't want that. And it was just a battle zone. So I think a lot of the problem that happened out there in the park had to do with the consistency of that board.
You've had three different superintendents over a four-year period of time, and it's just, it's been, I think mass chaos is probably a fair assessment.
And I did. Yes.
You, you're hoping for stability, but is it, is it board appointments? Is it, hey, you know, you know, once, once seats are open, having a, a further interview process?
You need a group of similarly minded people as to, as to what, what they're there to do and what the value of the park is. And they can sit down and rationally discuss things, but I saw none of that out there. So I, I think some of the problem is the consistency of that board.
Okay. Joe, what, what do you think of Memorial Park? And Joe, pick up the baton on this conversation, my guy.
When Whitey Shively was president of the board about 20 years, 15, 18 years ago, he, he asked me if I wanted that job out there. I said, why do I appreciate it, but no, I don't. That was between Rex and Lori. But then, and I was with the county highway when that, when that happened with the, the park board stated that one, one person was going to be superintendent, and the commissioners tried to put somebody else in there, and, and they found out that the park board has the right to make their own appointment of, of park board, of.
Park superintendent.
Superintendent. So they currently have an opening on the park board, and they currently have an opening or two openings for park employees, if anyone is interested. But what, it, it just seems to be such a, a gem of the county, and so many people are so happy and thrilled with their memories of the park and what it has been in the past. What they're doing now, the food and beverage awarded them 1.2 million dollars, and then they got $167,000 from the American Rescue Funds. And they've hired FPBH, an engineering service that's got an office here in Newcastle, to engineer where the water and, and electric lines are going to be. The electric lines are all going to be buried, and they have that plan in place. They're, they're going to go forward and get estimates on what it's going to cost to have the work done. And then in addition to that, there's a, there's going to be a considerable amount of money spent on the old shelter house. And they're looking at redoing the exterior of the old shelter house to keep in line with the historical preservation. Because of its age, it has a lot of work that needs to be done. And the long-term goal down, down the road would be to have a, a, a all-year-round facility there where it could be heated and cooled. That's a long way away. But there is, there's, there's more money than I've ever been aware of, available for improvements to the park. And how it will be spent will obviously be up to the park board. And one of the things that in, in months ago, I was asked what I was going to do if I got to be commissioner, what I was going to do about the sludge in the ponds. There's, there's four ponds there, there's a total of 12 acres of water. And they've most recently had a, an environmentalist from Indianapolis came over and took samples of the water. And on the scale of one to 10, 10 being the worst, the water conditions tested four, not because of the algae that was there. They've treated for some of the algae, but some of the algae they were treating for was actually more difficult to treat for. So they've got some information from the environmentalists as to what to do to help treat them. But the depth of the ponds is, is not adequate to do the paddle boats and so forth, which is what people have said that they wanted to do. And then the, the sides of the ponds are, are caving in, so there needs to be some reinforcement of the sides of the ponds, if the ponds were to be cleaned out. It's a process of, once you remove the sludge from the bottom, it's an environmental concern as to what do you do with it? They've had just ballpark figures of 300 to 500,000 dollars per pond to have that done. It's not even, they're not letting bids on it now. They're, that's just a, it's a, it's a, they've got a list of items that they want to get done that happens to be one of them. And it happens to be one that I asked about because I'd been asked about that. So there, there is a lot of, lot of things that need to be done, and there appears to be a once in a, you know, many years opportunity to get a lot of them done due to the influx of the cash that I mentioned earlier.
Any thoughts on the expo project? If, if that board comes to the county and says, hey, we want to figure something out, we want to, we want to try to get these buildings completed? Obviously, there's been a lot of turnover and, you know, COVID, COVID was a, a big influence on those as well. Any expectation or hopes to reinvigorate that project?
From the very beginning, when that project first started with the Hope Initiative and the monies that were raised and the county funds that were utilized, there was a project that was planned for what was called Cardinal Field, a flat, several acre field where they run the Whippet Dogs. And that was initially, I, what I've been told is initially where they were going to put a building, on a flat piece of land. That's not where they ended up going because of, for whatever reason, it was decided not to put it there, they're going to put it over here. And over here means there's hills and valleys and an existing, several existing shelters and so forth. So it was determined and decided that's where it was going to be. So the hilltops had to be cut down, the valleys had to be filled and had to be made level. And then the cash money that may or may not have been available to build on a flat piece of property was then utilized to make.
To do the dirt.
Hills and valleys to, uh, flat and level. And so that's one explanation that I've heard as to why we are where we are. And just, I don't know, last Saturday evening, I drove past there, but I, I mean, I'm aware of what's been done, and I'm aware that there's way a lot more that needs to be done. And where are the funds coming from? I don't know. And I, I've been in contact with some of the members of the expo board, and, and they've shared their, their hopes and dreams, and I know that it's going to be a very, very nice place one of these days. I'm just not sure how we get there from here. And I had listened to the, when the, when the food and beverage money was, was doled out, I mean, there was even a, there was even a statement in the, in the law about the expo center being some one of the recipients, but it didn't happen. So that money's gone and it didn't, it didn't go to the expo.
And the, the reason, I guess, I'm bringing it up in this conversation is that there was almost a, a warning or a conversa, in the, I don't know if you'd call it a testimony, but Representative Saunders came and spoke at some of the application hearings. And he essentially said, hey, Henry County, if you don't fund this, you know, there's a chance you're going to end up with a building coming back to you. There was a, there was concern that a food and beverage didn't come to help finish this out, you're going to end up owning a, a half completed building. And I, I feel like we were put on notice in that conversation with Representative Saunders, and here we are, you know, every four years, we elect county commissioners or every two years. So I feel like it's a, a conversation we at least have to make sure that you guys are aware of and see if you've put any thought into this at all. Because we've got a, you know, the county paid 1.2 million dollars, there was a bond that, that went in, and that was the contribution plus the land. Where, you know, where does it go next? Do y'all have anything else on that? We can, we can talk about it, or we can, we can carry on.
I, I mean, I listened to Representative Saunders, and I, I'd heard that. And I, I listened to the other applicants for the food and beverage when I, when I was there at the meetings and so forth. And I, I know the way it unfolded, it just didn't happen. So that's what happened then, and what happens next is, I, I don't, I'm not really sure.
Yep. All right. Um, let's talk happy thoughts. So Henry County's got an awful lot of, of assets and we, what we call gems, and I, I kind of, I listed a number of them there, but what do you guys think are the most marketable assets of Henry County? And I, I talked about, you know, the last time we went over this, some of the parks we have, some youth sports, some things that are tourism attractions, but what, what makes Henry County marketable, Steve?
I was a, I was a tourism commissioner for several years. I was president of the Henry County Community Convention and Visitors Bureau. The things that you mentioned here are, are all marketable. The Basketball Hall of Fame, I don't think it gets as much advertising as it should statewide for people to come out and see it. But people who drive by on I-70, if they see a sign out there that says Basketball Hall of Fame, they do stop and see it. We also have, besides what you've listed there, we have the Wilbur Wright Museum, that, another place that gets visited a lot from people from, from out of state, the Hoosier Gym in Knightstown.
And you've got, you've got the whole Hoops in Henry campaign that's been happening about the last year or so, right?
Yep, yep. And we got the Mountain Lawn Racetrack, the Yogi Bear Campground, even the Guyer Opera House. People come from out of county just to go to, go to the theater and see the shows they have there. So I think all of those are lean draws for tourism. None of them are big draws. That's why I was talking about maybe having a NASCAR venue in this county. It'd be a huge draw, and I think people would come. And coming, coming for NASCAR would make them see all these other things too. So I think we need a central, a center anchor to draw people in.
So some, some motorsports investment in, in Mountain Lawn Speedway is, is your, what you're proposing?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Joe, any, anything that makes, that makes Henry County marketable or special or sets it apart? So much, so much of the, the conversation now in economic development is, hey, people are going to choose where to live, and then they'll figure out the job from there. So what, what makes Henry County the place that people, people need to say, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to choose to be a Henry County resident?
It, it seems to be a couple of other things that you didn't mention, all those items that you listed, in no uncertain terms, the Basketball Hall of Fame obviously is, is wonderful to have here, and, and the, the saddle club has been a, a gem and drawing people for many years. And, and it's a pretty well-known fact that it, the people come here, they, if they don't camp out there at the, at the park, they stay in maybe one of the few local motels that we have. The Westwood Park is just, is wonderful, the, the horse trails and so forth that they have. I live right next to Summit Lake and look at it every day. And it's a, it's a very pleasant and a very, a gem of the, of the community. The Boondocks, down there in the Boondocks, has been recently purchased by a, by a Knightstown resident, and they've, they've done some upgrades and some different things. And I've, I'm told that it's a very incredible place.
Are they reopening that?
Yes. And they have the lodge that you can actually stay there overnight, and they have a lot of activities and so forth. But, and then the trails, in all the years that I was with the county highway department, I would, I would hear the trails, the trails, the trails. And, and, and the funding of the, and the road funding is through the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Local Road and Street Fund, and what it amounts to is all that money that we pay in gas tax, 28 cents a gallon now, is broken up into different various things. Most of it has, I mean, all of it has to do with transportation, but happens to be trails as part of it. And I was, I always liked the trails, and I've run, I've run the trails, and I've got the shirt to prove it, and I've ridden on the little bicycle hikes that we've had in, in Henry County for, to raise money for the trails, and it's all good. But I always thought that, always wanted more money for the roads. But at any rate, the trail systems that we have and the ones that are. that we have and the ones that are, that are projected to be constructed in the near future have to be a positive. Not, it's, it's not the Cardinal Greenway or, or the, the Monon, but we've got some really nice trails in Henry County.
And I, for me, it's just a citizen that, hey, you know, I've got, I've got these old vintage swim bikes that we like to ride and the, you know, looking for places to do that. You, building a network of trails is what you need, right? You've got, you've got portions of them that are all over the community, but you've got to get them connected together where it becomes, hey, here, let's go do a lap. Let's, you know, the, the out and back running thing. Zach talks about this all the time, how it's a nightmare to go, go, go out and come back to do something. You want to, you want to make a lap. You want to make a circle. So finding a way to connect the trails together is probably the next, the next step.
That would be my understanding of what the Trail Committee is trying to do is to go from point A to point B. And whether or not that happens in the very near future, but as they have pieced together trails in different parts of the county, it's obvious they're trying to accomplish that. But owners of property that are not interested in the trail being in their backyard have not participated in that. And, and that's, that's where it stands now.
It takes, it takes time to, to get that accomplished.
Middletown's got one from just about the Madison County line to 600 north, nearly to Honey Creek. I think the plan is to go on from there. There is a section through Honey Creek, I know, where, where somebody bought the land after the railroad was torn up, bought the land and is not willing to give it up where the trail would go through.
And to run through the county road to get back on the trail.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I will say that the, you know, we, we talked about in Memorial Park, food and beverage tax, the food and beverage tax money. I, I spent an awful lot of weekends camping and quite a few of them we spent at Henry County. The, the amount of folks that are searching for outdoor recreation is unbelievable. Summit Lake is, it used to be at one point Summit Lake would be busy, maybe just the big holiday weekends, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Fourth of July, and maybe a weekend or two in the fall. At this point, any random weekend, you try to book a campsite in Summit Lake. If you went in today, there's a very good chance you're probably not going to find an open campsite on a Friday through Sunday, the rest of the year, until you get to November. Booked up solid. I, there are so many outdoor recreational activities and there's, there's a demand there that I, I think, I don't know if we can ever get the state to actually build more into the, you know, build more campsites out there in the camp, or if the county has to request it or how that happens. But if you, if you can create opportunities for folks to come in from out of town, which, you know, Summit Lake is a massive attractant, that, those folks go to Thousand Degree, those folks go to Ellen K, those folks go to Weenie World. They, they come to town, they spend money, and that starts to feed the engine of, hey, we can do some of these other projects with, with, with that kind of a magnet.
Summit Lake's another marketable asset should be on this list.
Absolutely. Um, all right. So what, uh, I, I copied and pasted. All right. Here's a confession. I copied and pasted today, what we talked about in the, in the spring. And I said, the new detention center is opening. So now the detention center is open. Uh, and Joe talked about this a little bit during his, during his opening comments. But Steve, what do you think about the new detention center that Henry County has going forward? Does it make an impact on the community? Do you have, do you have any expectations for it as the, as a commissioner?
And Joe, you'll have to educate me on some of this because I always thought, for years, they talked about they needed a new jail, they needed a new jail. And I kept saying, you have a facility sitting up there by the park. Why can't you convert that and use that for the jail? They said, no, no, that won't work. No, no, that won't work. I never understood why, because it was built as, as sort of detention center. I thought it could be adapted for cheaper than by, than building a new one. Now we've built a new one, a good ways out of town. And it's full. And we're talking about expanding it again already. I'm surprised that it's full already. Joe started to explain a little while ago why he thought that, that during the pandemic and during that, the jail was in such bad condition in town. And then the pandemic happened and they just weren't putting, locking people up as much. And now that they can, they are. Is that what you were trying to say, Joe?
What I was told was that during the pandemic, the heat of the pandemic, when they were experiencing the COVID running rampant through the old facility, that they may or may not have been going out and picking up people on warrants for arrest to stick them in that building. And now that the new facility is open, maybe they have expanded the number of warranted people that have, maybe were in need of being picked up. That's just one explanation that I heard today. When I asked the question, how could it be full? And by the word full, it's not F U L L. It's full. It's full. What was described to me as being 80 to 85%.
It's at the targeted full rate.
Targeted full rate.
Not the bursting at the seams emergency rate we've been at in the other building for so long, right?
So in answer to your question about, I'm just surprised that we're already having to talk about expanding it. Again, they were planning on eventual expansion, but they just finished it.
Yeah. I mean, four, four years ago, when this, when, when we went through this election cycle, the big conversation was, hey, are we going to raise taxes to pay for, there was, there was a new income tax available that the state put in place and said, hey, counties, you can do this to pay, to pay for your new facility. Henry County did that. Here we are. We've built a facility, not even four years later. And it's, hey, we want to expand on it. How many, at some point, you do wonder how many, how many county buildings, how many expansions you want to have. And that's a, that's probably a, another conversation to have. We, about 250 feet away from this building, the commissioners just sold the, the, the old annex building. I think it was called the annex building. There's a number of other county owned buildings that are in the inventory. Should that still be a part of the conversation of, of shedding some of those facilities from, from Henry County? Or are there other uses that you think we can find, find a way to keep them in the county inventory? Joe?
The one, one described is the Hope Building, where there's the, the mural on the side with the cars on it. It's being, apparently it's being turned over to a realtor to be marketed. And then the, the building that would be described as a catty corner from the courthouse that initially housed work release people. The back of that building has garages attached to it. That's going to be maintained in the property of the commissioners because they're going to use it to house the county ambulances, as I understand. But the, what would be considered the, the southern part of the building that faces Broad Street is going to be available. They had discussions yesterday about the potential of accepting bids and it was tabled. So it did not sell. But I guess it's, it's on the market to be sold and, and with the expectations that there'll be something positive to the community come out of it. So, and the, the one that they did sell, the one that you're talking about is just a few feet from where we're sitting. The bottom of it is to be a,
Some storefronts, right?
Some storefronts, restaurants. And then the, the upper levels will be a boutique hotel. Is that correct?
That is the rumor. I, we'll see.
Hotel?
Yeah, they're allegedly, there's going to be a hotel in the, the, the annex building. Yes. So Steve, it, it's, it's like a double edged sword, right? You've got, hey, the county can do something with these facilities, these buildings. And we, but at the same time, they consume water, they consume electricity, they consume, consume emergency services, but they don't pay any property taxes. So if you, if you sell a facility, now it's back out there and it's producing downtown. Should, should the county be looking for more opportunities to shed real estate?
If we've got real estate that's, that we're not using, absolutely. There's no reason to hold on to it. We have, in Middletown, we have the old school, the old high school gymnasium. The school's gone, but the gymnasium's still there. And for years, after the school was torn down, we thought that the town, thought that the Shenandoah owned the gym, because they used it. They've used it for girls' basketball games and for training. And, and then we got a bill one time for property taxes on the building, the town did. So Drew Cooper called, called over to the office and said, they said, no, no. Shenandoah doesn't own that. The town in Middletown does.
And the town in Middletown owed property taxes?
And we don't, we have never used it. We've never considered that we owned it. And so we decided to just let Shenandoah go ahead and use it because they're keeping it heated, they're keeping it roofed, they're maintaining it. And it's a historic building. We don't want to let it sit there and rot. So we're happy with that. But that's a building that we could sell or, or it could be, become a, a, a community center or a theater or some, it could be any number of things. But because of this historic value, we're going to keep it. Right now it's a warehouse for Shenandoah schools.
Gotcha. All right. There's a, there's a conversation that we have with every county commissioner, candidate, and this is for Dakota Davis, who's not here. He's, he's given me like two or three different doctor's notes as to why he couldn't be here tonight. And I don't know which one we're accepting, but he's, he's got a list of ailments. Uh, he's an advocate for backyard chickens. In Henry County, so, and this has become a big thing in the pandemic because people wanted their eggs, they wanted their chickens. Henry County says that you need to have five acres if you want to have any livestock. And livestock includes chickens. So are the county commissioners willing to consider some sort of an allowance for, for backyard poultry? Or do people like Dakota that own 4.9 acres have to have their chickens identify as parakeets to be legal? Steve, what do we do?
For the county, for the county, it'd be different. In Middletown, you can't have livestock of any kind within the town limits.
But as the county commissioner, you are in charge of ordinances.
Right. I, I don't see any reason why you couldn't have chickens on less than five acres, as long as you don't have a rooster.
So hens. We will compromise and say hens. So we can have, I don't know, a half dozen hens. Can we, can we, can we say that that's a fair number as long as they're not a nuisance?
A dozen, but no rooster.
Up, up to a dozen. That is a lot of eggs in a day. A day, a day, you got a dozen eggs a day coming out of a Steve Holmes Commissioner campaign. Joe, what are we going to do about chickens?
I think it's a silly question and I'm not worried about chickens in anybody's backyard. And I, the only reason I say that is because who, who's enforcing this?
Well, it used to be Darren Jacobs, but they got rid of him.
He was enforcing the five acre chicken law. And I, I don't know. I, my opinion is, it doesn't appear to be a problem to have backyard chickens.
All right. It's a silly question, but I have to ask it because it's, it's a silly law and you, you commissioners. I know none of you, neither one of you guys serves yet, but here in about four months, you're going to hear from Dakota and he's gonna, he's gonna bellyache. So I want y'all to know.
In four months, along, along the same line, someone is going to have to deal, the commissioner's going to have to deal with the repair of the Justice Center, the, the courthouse annex and the courthouse itself. The, the report came back from the study that was done. It was, I mean, you add it all up, it's like $12 million to fix everything that needs to be fixed with those three buildings that, and obviously the courthouse is such a, a historical site. The Justice Center doesn't, you know, it's only 20 years old, 20, 21 years old, 22 years old. And to think that it has that many problems, but it's a, it's a building that gets 24 hours a day used seven, I mean, with the dispatch center being down there. And then the courthouse annex, of course, is, has so many years on it also. So I'm, I know that the, that it's a problem that's going to have to be addressed and, and possibly some of this ARF money could be used for that. But who knows what else is going to have to be done. And so maintaining the buildings that, that the county has responsibility over is a huge thing. And
That's a higher priority than poultry.
That's probably the case. Yes.
I think the ARF money's going to run out here in a few minutes.
I think, I think it's a
And I, I'm really surprised at that building, being only 20 years old. This isn't the first time that's needed major repairs. And it, we ought to look closely at contractors and architects next time we decide to build something.
Let's, let's, let's wrap up on this, on this theme. How much time do you expect to be able to dedicate to the job of being county commissioner, Steve? I, I've seen county commissioners that, you know, it's a part-time thing and they show up for meetings. And then there's the folks that, that are just all encompassed in it. And they're, they're county commissioner, seven days a week, 20 out, every waking moment, they're, they're focused on the commissioner job. How, how do you see yourself if, if you're sitting in one of those three chairs come January? What are your expectations for the role?
I'm the kind of person who would work 40 hours a week. Kim Kronk worked 80 hours a week, you know? I mean, he was all over it all the time. And it's always been a part-time position. But I don't think you can do that job properly, part-time.
All right. Joe, what are your thoughts?
I worked with nine different commissioners while I was working with the county and they all had their different appetite for how many hours they were spending on the job. And, and I could see that you could definitely spend 40 hours, 50 hours, 60 hours a week on it. I don't know that it, I don't know that it would ever become, I don't see why it would ever become a full-time job. I mean, as it is, it's a, it's considered a part-time job. And, and I think the, that the, the effort that the individual commissioner puts in is probably going to put in way more than part-time hours. But that's, that's the way it is. That's just the way it goes.
All right. Um, at, at this point in the program, we're, we're just about ready to wrap up. This is where we give folks a chance to clean up anything they forgot. If they want to look, if you're not at, every candidate that hasn't asked for money yet at this point to help pay for the campaign, you get, you get bullied into asking folks for money to help support putting gas in the tanks, to buy yard signs, to get your door knocking materials. You got it, you got to do the ask or else, or else we, we tell you, we beat you into asking for, for money to pay for the campaign. This is coming from a person who's been involved in a number of them and it takes money to do it. So Steve, how do folks learn more about you? How do they get involved with the campaign? How, how do they help you out to, between now and Election Day?
I do a lot of writing for the newspapers. You learn a little about what I feel, what I think, what I plan from the articles that I put in the newspaper. I've listed several times in newspaper articles, my credentials, why I think I'm a good fit for, for this position. I've been on the, I've been clerk treasurer of Middletown. I've been on the town council of Middletown, sat on many boards of directors as president, been the commissioner of tourism for the county, been president of the Henry County Community Convention Bureau. So I think I'm ready for this. I'm ready to move up to this. I think I'd be a good commissioner. And I appreciate any support you'd like to send to me.
Very good. Joe, any final thoughts, things we need to clean up, things we forgot? How, how do people support you and help you, help you get between now and Election Day?
I guess I would ask for, for citizens' support in my endeavor to, to be the next commissioner in the Northern District of Henry County. I've lived in Henry County for 45 years and, and have been in a, in a position of, of public trust in those, in all those years. My cell phone number is 765-520-0314. My, I have a Facebook page that just says Joe Wiley for Commissioner, and I can be reached through that. My phone number is still in a phone book. If you can find the phone book, I still have a landline.
Does it have a dial tone? If you go pick one up, does it still work?
It does. And I'm, so I'm, I'm readily available to, to ask or answer questions. And I do, I would appreciate your support in the upcoming November 8th election. And, and I thank you again for putting this on. And thank you for, to Steve for showing up and participating and, and look forward to participating in the, in the November 8th election.
Very good. Zach, you've been quiet over there. You've been, you've been the true unspoken hero. I've seen you climbing over the desk, under the desk, plugging wires, replugging wires. Are you okay? Did you make it?
First of all, I had a meeting before this. And so normally people don't see what I wear to the podcast. It's normally, and I was remote today for work. So gym shorts and a t-shirt. Today, I'm in like some nice Columbia cargo shorts and an Under Armour polo. And I'm rolling around on the ground, trying to trace wires because Dakota, Dakota's wire management is exceptional. But that means tracing wires is a night But that means tracing wires is a nightmare because they, everything disappears in a bundle and can't come out. So I could not figure out the sound issue. We're going to try swapping out our capture card for the second time in about a month. So I'm sorry to the people that want to watch this live, but, um, other than that, no, I've been chasing wires. I have no thoughts. My brain is, my brain is just.
You are used up. Well, thank you very much, Zach, for producing it and, and being a good sport and helping us put it together. Steve and Joe, you guys are awesome. Thank you for spending the time with us.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Very appreciative to have the conversation and hopefully you guys get some, get some feedback for some voters and we'll see, we'll see how it all shakes out. And I, I will say real quickly on the, on the phone line thing, I, I was at my brother's house today and he had a car crash into his, a power pole in front of his house in May. And they, it knocked out the telephone, it knocked out the internet and it knocked, so the Comcast service and it knocked out what I assume is the Frontier telephone lines. And there's still a pile of just telephone wires laying in his front yard that, that are not contained, they're not, they're not messed, they're, nobody's come out to fix it since May. So I, I feel like there's a lot of people that still just have the telephone. That's why I said, Joe, if you pick it up, does it still work? Cause if you live near Westwood, if your phone's not working, I'm pretty sure that your wires are crossed in my brother's front yard and they've been laying that way since May. So I'm, I'm not entirely certain if Frontier even cares anymore, or if they're just a, just an organization that takes checks.
My first thought is for somebody that knows nothing about phone wires, there must not be enough metal in there for somebody to have just stolen it for scrap. Because that's the first thing I thought was it just would have disappeared and somebody would have stolen it for whatever metals in there.
It's just a pile, just a pile of pairs of wires.
It's fiberglass.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, no, you know, yeah. So it's, it's worthless to somebody. So.
Insanity. Anyway, that's it. We thank you guys so much for the support and being a part of the show. Uh, once again, we want a special thanks to Wylens Flowers, the Slick Pickle and Big Bounce Inflatables for, uh, for making this happen. We will see you all next week.